Okay, call eating to order, a regular eating in November. Barb, what did you call the role?
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wicklitt?
Here.
Tonight, we're pleased to have students from Brom Elementary here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Students, would you come forward, get us started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olahtha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it's important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the works outlined on the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in the audience, we requested audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Move on to the adoption of the agenda, item 2.01.
Move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wicklitt?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to recognitions and awards.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. I'm excited to start the night with one of my favorite parts of the evening, which is awards and recognitions. So to begin, I would like to invite members of the Olahtha East High School counseling staff, Anne Brooke, Jamie Hay, Whitney Schmely, Mary Smith, and Devin Wallace, and of course, their principal Carrie Lane up to the front to join us.
Okay, call eating to order, a regular eating in November. Barb, what did you call the role?
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wicklitt?
Here.
Tonight, we're pleased to have students from Brom Elementary here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Students, would you come forward, get us started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got to make both?
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olahtha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it's important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the works outlined on the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in the audience, we requested audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Move on to the adoption of the agenda, item 2.01.
Move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wicklitt?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to recognitions and awards.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. I'm excited to start the night with one of my favorite parts of the evening, which is awards and recognitions. So to begin, I would like to invite members of the Olahtha East High School counseling staff, Anne Brooke, Jamie Hay, Whitney Schmely, Mary Smith, and Devin Wallace, and of course, their principal Carrie Lane up to the front to join us. Olahtha East High School was recognized as a winner in the 2022 Kansas FAFSA Challenge, a collaboration between the Kansas Board of Regents and Kansas State Department of Education. The FAFSA Challenge began in February 2021 as a friendly competition to improve the statewide FAFSA completion rate. Olahtha East was honored for having the highest FAFSA completion rate among 6A high schools. This is due to the amazing work of our school counselors and staff, and what they do every single day to ensure that our students are successful. So thank you and congratulations to our Olahtha East counseling staff. Next, we are excited to celebrate a special award-winning group who won the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, or ASBO. So please join me in welcoming Deputy Superintendent John Hutchison, Budget Manager Jana Raper, Budget Specialist Kristen Slavik, and Executive Assistant Suzanne Hassert to the front. And I'd like to note while they're making their way up here that our graphic designer Kurt Jur, Director of Business and Financial Services Cassie Osborne, and Administrative Assistant Laura Marion are also part of this rock star group, but they were unable to join us tonight. The ASBO Meritorious Budget Award promotes and recognizes best budget presentation practices in school districts. Districts that apply to the MBA program recognize the importance of presenting a high-quality, easy-to-understand budget internally and to their community. By participating in this program, not only do districts have access to the tools and resources they need to communicate the district's goals and objectives clearly, but they also demonstrate their commitment to upholding nationally-recognized budget presentation standards. This is the 25th consecutive year that the Olahtha Public Schools has been awarded the MBA. Let's give it over to them. These individuals work tirelessly on developing our district's budget each year, pulling together financial data, creating forecasts and narratives, and pulling it all together into a well-illustrated document for all to understand. Congratulations to our business and finance team for this prestigious award. And that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
All right. Moving on to our school spotlight, Brom Elementary, I'd invite Principal Conklin and anyone else on the team.
Hello, we are Brom Elementary. The Brom 5th grade discussed what made Brom so great, but we had so many ideas that we had to smash it together into a top-10 list that will be presented by me, Bentley Buck,
Ruth Coletta, Abby Tweeter,
and Yusuf Sane will present to you.
Number 10, we are a leader in me Lighthouse School. Our teachers empower us every day by helping us to live by the eight habits of leadership. In 2021, we earned Lighthouse certification from Franklin Covey, Covey, sorry. Number 9, Brom Clubs and Activities. Brom has a variety of clubs and activities such as Fun Runners, Math Wing, CSI, Spirit Squad, Art Studio Club, Special Corps, and Bands and Strings. These are very fun because we get to hang out after school and do what we love, and we get to bond with our friends. Number 8, Service Projects. Each year, we focus on at least four service projects in the building. We've most recently done Noah's Bandage Project, the annual Fall Food Drive, Pennies for Shoes and Students Electric Projects in the Spring. We also do students electric, oh, I already said that. Last year, we did Dinnin' Kits for Starfish Project and Casey Pep Project.
Number 7, Panther Packs. I like Panther Packs because each kid from kindergarten to 5th grade goes to our pack leaders room, and we talk about the eight habits and do fun activities with them.
Number 6, Positive Behavior Sports. You can earn paws slips by following our leadership habits. You can earn paws slips in the hall, at specials, or in the lunchroom. When you get those paws, you can turn them in for stuff on the paws menu. Our two most popular things that kids like to spend on is paying three paws for the skills machine and 15 paws for the spinner. We also do Leader of the Week in class of the quarter.
Number 5, School-Wide Leadership Roles. Every kid from 1st grade to 5th grade fills out an application at the beginning of the year to apply for a school-wide leadership role. We love helping our school.
And I'll be talking about the Morning Habits Cafe. When you attend the cafe, then you will get donuts and juice. Your family will also get a cup of tea. Today's weather is a high of 57 degrees and cloudy, and my Ziggy this morning said that was a 25% chance of raining this morning. That's still a chance! This is the Kindness Camp, and we have George, who has caught being a good leader. This bucket fills us. I would like to fill George's bucket by saying, "You are kind, you get your work done on time. Brom honors." Way to go, George. Number 4, Wigs. No, sorry, not these kind of wigs. Wigs stand for wildly important goals. Brom has a variety of wigs because each student, teacher, class, grade, and the school has a wildly important goal. This year, our school-wide wig is to become more fluent readers. Number 3, Student Voice Matters. We get to discuss with our class and vote on our class party activities. We usually vote on what we'd like to do for our service projects. We also have student suggestion slips for songs, jokes, or quotes for the morning announcements. Service dog. I was able to voice my opinion on why we needed a service dog, and we were able to get one. Meet Hannah, our friend at Brom. Muffins on the menu. We've also had a student who was able to make a change for the entire district. She wrote a letter to food services wanting to know which kind of muffin would be at lunch, and now they added that to the menu. Number 2, Our Classroom Communities. Brom has so many ways our classroom communities are great, but one of the big ones is that we do morning meetings every day. In these, we greet our peers, synergize and solve problems, learn second-step strategies through our leader-in-me program, and set goals to meet our wig. Another really big part about this is that our teachers are absolutely amazing. And number 1, Our Community Synergizes. Most recently, our students, staff, and parent Lighthouse teams work together to create an event worth attending. Check out our Morning Habits Cafe. Any questions?
That was fantastic. Board members, any questions or comments?
I have a question. Ruth, when you said, Ruth, yeah, when you said that you have student input and you fill out the forms, where do you submit those? Is there a central box, or do you give them to your teacher? How does that work?
There's a box where every student can write something during their free time and put a suggestion slip in.
That's great. What a great report. Good job, guys. We really loved it.
Others? Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our American Education Week presentation.
We don't have any props. We should have brought a wig. My name is Brooke Robinson. I have been teaching in the Olahtha School District for 18 years at Chisholm Trail.
And I am Dr. Anne Marie Bixler-Funk. I am a PBIS coach for the district.
And we're here to talk about American Education Week, which starts November 13th and goes through the 18th. I got it. So as we know, Olahtha School District was formed by the consolidation of five smaller school districts, spanning back to schools from the 1860s. We are aware that our schools play a significant role in our community, often providing the stability, routine, and focus for families and students. The community, family, and school partnerships in Olahtha have created a school district that is exceptional in both the state of Kansas and the nation. Under the leadership of countless Board of Education members, the staff of our district have navigated a path to excellence for all of our students, regardless of the hardships presented, because that is what support staff, administrators, and educators do. All right, and here's a little history lesson for tonight. American Education Week. All right, concerned that 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and almost 10% were physically unfit, representatives of the NEA and the American Legion met in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education. The first observance of American Education Week was actually in 1921. The NEA asked for the week to be observed annually in all communities in the country for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And so we often talk about who's on our bus, right? And so when we talk about the American Legion and NEA partnering, this bus has all of the organizations that partner with us for National Education Week. So the National School Boards Association is part of the group. We have counselor organizations that are part of the group. Administrators are all part of the group that support celebrating American Education Week. We're all on the bus. The wheels. So the week of celebrating, during the American Education Week, schools are invited to kick off the National Week of Celebration by including information in their morning announcements highlighting the observance of the week. As schools and classrooms celebrate, they have many opportunities to honor the work that our substitute teachers, our education support professionals, our educators, and our families do as partners in creating a great public education experience for all students. The staff in our community schools are invaluable to the success of our students. It must be recognized as such. Specific resources on how to celebrate each day are available at NEA.org. In this month of gratitude, please join us in celebrating how grateful we are for the staff in the Olahtha Public Schools. And there's many ways that we can go about doing that. So we invite the community to check out teachers' Amazon wish lists. The Olahtha Public Schools Foundation is supporting those as well. Send a positive note to an education influencer in Olahtha. And as you think about that, think about any adult, any person who supports our kids, right? Because we all, we all support our kids. Our bus drivers, our parent educators, our cafeteria workers, parents, board of ed. Everybody deserves a thank you during this week. And one last reminder, American Education Week takes place from November 13th through the 18th. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your dedication.
Sorry, Mr. President, I just started talking. As Jeanette and Mr. Heinecke make their way to the podium tonight in kind of an unusual placement, this is a presentation tonight that also has a potential motion at the conclusion of the presentation that you'll see on board docs that coincides with the presentation that we're going to hear tonight. So I just wanted to be sure to point that out as we move forward.
Thank you. Oh, did you have something to say?
No, just thanking Dr. Yeager.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Yeager and the Board of Education. We are very excited to be here this evening to talk to you about a special place under the umbrella of Special Education Services, which is GIFTED, and the gifted services that we deliver here in the Olahtha Public Schools. And I want to start by just introducing Andy Heinecke. He is one of our seven special ed coordinators, and he supports our GIFTED team. But just briefly, he is a product of the Olahtha Schools and has spent 16 years here as a school psychologist and then a special education coordinator. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Andy to dive into our GIFTED discussion.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to present to everybody tonight. So as Jeanette said, giftedness does fall within the special education realm, and we provide gifted services to students through a special education process. Kansas does define gifted as performing or demonstrating the potential for performing at significantly higher levels of accomplishment in one or more academic fields due to intellectual ability when compared to others of similar age, experience, and environment. And that very dry definition does speak to all of the amazing things that our gifted teachers do for our students. Not only helping to support them academically and being able to extend their work academically, but also to be able to address the very special and unique social-emotional needs of our gifted students, also working on soft skills so they can take those abilities and be able to translate those into meaningful, marketable skills. So when we look at gifted eligibility, it is a special education process, which means that students have to qualify for gifted services. That goes in the form of a referral and an evaluation. Our evaluations have to, by law, include a variety of assessment tools, strategies to gather relevant functional, developmental, and academic information, meaning we need to have a full picture of what the students' capabilities are to see if they might be eligible and in need of special education services in the form of gifted services. So the state of Kansas has what we call eligibility indicators. Every one of our areas of special education qualification falls under a category of eligibility, gifted being one of those. And the state has 17 indicators across three different categories for our teams to take a look at when they're considering a student for gifted eligibility. That's evidence of performing at significantly higher levels in one or more academic fields, evidence being due to intellectual ability, and evidence that compared to others of similar age, experience, and environment. And those words in the commentary are important, and we'll be delving into that a little bit more here in just a moment. Could you give me a little bit of an idea of what gifted look like here in Olahtha? In 2002, Olahtha did change the criteria in looking at giftedness due to a very high number of gifted students. At that time, we had 1,200 gifted students, with an enrollment that was much lower than what we currently see with 31 gifted teachers. As we look at our gifted numbers today, 20 years later, we've got close to 10,000 more students, but our numbers have gone down significantly in that amount of time. We went from about 5.5% gifted in 2002 to a little over 2% of our population being gifted or identified as gifted as of 2022. Total Kansas gifted numbers is about 3.2% of the total Kansas enrollment of gifted eligible age students here in Kansas. So we are below that number for the state. In 2002, because of those gifted numbers, because of those high numbers at the time, the Olahtha Public School Board voted to change Olahtha's criteria. So what Olahtha would consider for eligibility indicators, from the state's numbers, which are 97th percentile on a standardized cognitive measure, heard those tests called IQ tests, they're measures of intellectual ability, and 95th percentile for an achievement measure, which is going to be in a standardized assessment that measures more of the academic skills. The board changed that to 98th percentile for the cognitive standardized measure and 97th percentile for achievement, with the purpose and the intent of being able to control the numbers of gifted at that time, to be able to give gifted teachers more of an opportunity to work in the classroom. Multiple reasons for that. With that change, we did see a decrease in the total number of gifted students to the point where we are today, and I'll go through those numbers in a moment. But with that as well, we've seen an issue that's not unique to Olahtha, but is an issue across the state of Kansas. And that's taking a look at our demographics of our gifted population. When we take a look at our gifted population, we see that that population does not match, does not look like our total population when it comes to a number of demographic areas. It got to the point that Kansas did do some investigating. A report from 2019 that the Kansas State Department of Education put out, Identification of Underrepresented Populations for Gifted Services in Kansas. And that again is looking at a multitude of demographic areas that we take data on. And so you can see the numbers before you up there. The middle column is the percent of state enrollment that falls under those subgroups. The far-right column is the percent of state gifted placement. And so you can see a very big discrepancy, and this data does come from 2017, 2018. But I'll tell you that the numbers haven't changed much since that time. But you can see the split for socioeconomic status. The way that we measure that is through pre-introduced lunch numbers. About a 50/50 split for state enrollment, total state enrollment, but you can see the drastic change when it comes to percent of gifted placement, much in favor of higher SES students. English language learners, there's a large discrepancy. We see a discrepancy between gender and a large discrepancy within ethnicity as well. And so, again, the state of Kansas recognized this issue within its gifted identification and put out the report to talk a little bit more about what some of the issues are with identification of those underrepresented populations within gifted. I'd like to say that our numbers in Olahtha are better than the state's, but unfortunately... I'd like to say that our numbers in Olathe are better than the state's, but unfortunately, we very much fall in line with where the state is. And so, as I told you before, in 2002, we had around 1,200 gifted students in Olathe. Now, we're around 650 total gifted students. Our gender disparity in gifted is pretty pronounced as well in looking at male versus female gifted students, about 62, 61% versus 39%. Our race and ethnicity breakdown as well does show a discrepancy when you take a look at our overall OPS district ethnic racial breakdown, and this comes directly from our district data. You can see the overall breakdown on the right and our gifted breakdown on the left, looking specifically and very much at some of the identification of Black or African-American students, Hispanic students, and an over-identification, or an over, should say identification, but over-representation of white or Caucasian students as it compares to our overall district And so, as we take a look at our gifted eligibility in Olathe, looking at our scores that we utilize will be one way that I think we can kind of take a look at how we overall look at gifted, but we do know that we need to be casting a wider net when it comes to gifted identification and looking at our practices and how we identify students for gifted services. The vast majority of our Kansas school districts do utilize the Kansas State Department of Education gifted eligibility indicators, which were the numbers that I had told you just a moment ago. And there's only a very few districts that utilize a different set of standards for cognitive and achievement measures. And so, you know, again, those standards are set forth by Kansas State Department of Education. They're widely in use for all of our eligibility categories. And so, we'd like for Olathe to be thinking about that, to be thinking about utilizing the standardized scores set forth in the eligibility indicators guidance from the state of Kansas. Again, that 97th percentile as opposed to 98th percentile on a norm test of cognition, 95th percentile on a nationally norm test of achievement. Beyond that, we also want to be taking a look at some of our methods of child find, which is our duty to find students that are exceptional. We need to be taking a look at our practices and make sure that we're not engaging in test bias or other biased practices when we're taking a look at identifying students. We have some incredible gifted teachers in the school district, and their special attention to the needs of students, looking for students that may not fit some of our traditional thoughts on what gifted students may look like or might need. We've got some pretty incredible practices out there in our field right now, and really looking for Olathe the opportunity to be a leader in identifying students of diverse backgrounds when it comes to gifted services. Those important supports for making sure that they're optimizing all of their abilities and being able to take those abilities and market those when they leave us here in Olathe. Any questions on that?
I've got some questions I can ask. So, we have 600, we have 24 existing teachers with 50 school buildings. How do we determine which buildings those individual, those 24, are in out of the 50?
So, we, in special education, when we have our teachers, whether it's a resource teacher or whether it's another area that we provide special education services, we look at caseloads. So, since our teachers that are in our gifted program are not a traditional classroom teacher, our teachers are split amongst schools according to numbers of students to optimize their ability to be able to provide the full array of minutes and opportunities for our students. And so, roughly our breakdown, we've got a gifted teacher at every one of our high schools. We've got a gifted teacher that may split, middle schools depending upon numbers, and then most of our teachers at the elementary level have multiple buildings. And again, that's based upon numbers and geographic area, those kinds of things.
So, the teachers move, the kids don't?
Correct.
Yeah, yep. I have a question that may, you might not have the answer to, but I'm going to throw it out. Given our gifted numbers are 650, we also have a distinguished scholars program, which if you would think of, those are most academically and gifted academically type of students that really looking for the rigor at the high school level. What's our distinguished scholars number like as a comparative to our gifted program, right? If we're, the way I look at that is, if we're bringing these gifted kids through the program, that distinguished scholars become something of a super attractor, right? Of really optimizing them at the high school level. Do we, anyone know that number, or is that something?
We wouldn't have it off the top of our heads, but we could absolutely get that for you.
And as you mentioned, you know, we do have those opportunities that secondary and at times, students who meet those gifted criteria may elect to a B-Force work or some of the other things that you stated there. Some students, though, needs can only be met, and as we stated earlier, gifted is a special education service, so it is specialized instruction. All of our students that receive gifted services have an individualized education plan, individualized to their specific needs that throws changes with them. And so, yes, for some students that fall under our gifted eligibility, some of those opportunities at secondary do meet their needs, and they may not elect to continue on gifted services. Some gifted is the only way that's going to meet their needs, those opportunities to everything from socialization to being able to optimize their knowledge and market that knowledge, opportunities to be able to work on self-selected things that optimize some of their areas. So, yeah, there is, there is an opportunity for students, but that would be interesting.
You also mentioned that the gifted program is limited or capped, I'm not sure the exact word you said, around caseloads, right? And so, we have, what is the capacity? What is the likelihood that we actually have double or triple that number of kids that would fit that, that we just are not serving because we have caseload limits?
I wouldn't say necessarily that caseloads ever limit the students we would serve or limits of the people, but second of all, if a child's eligible, they're served. And so, right now, our overall caseloads sometimes are gifted are down from where they've been over the past few years. And so, with that, our gifted teachers are also tasked with helping to identify students who may be gifted and do a lot of the testing and evaluation as well. So, that is the big piece of what they do in serving that population. You know, should we, you could see, previously, we had more teachers in the district, so it would be a situation that to be able to use more inclusive practices, looking at more first population. Certainly, looking at some of those things doesn't necessarily open the blood gates by any means. Again, it is a very small population that we're looking at the needs, that level of unique specialized instruction, but you know, we would expect, but potentially adopting change in eligibility standards as well as looking at our own practice of identifying students. We would help define more students, yes.
What is the percent or number of kids that are tested each year? Again, we've got 30,000 kids. My curiosity is, are we, you're alluding to it, are we testing enough kids? Are we identifying them? You're talking about now there's an attraction model that teachers are being asked to kind of identify kids, because grades clearly aren't always an identifier. A cognitive IQ test can and might not be, but sometimes some difficult kids are really your brilliant kids who need to be identified, pulled in, and challenged. Tell us a little bit about that attraction model, that teacher find and bring to the program kind of approach you guys are currently working with.
Sure, you hit the nail on the head with that. That is something that we want to be looking at is our child find practices, what that looks like, what are those markers for potential giftedness? We've got wonderful, very strong screening measures that give us some good ideas on how students might be on a more low state. Some of the other markers that we need to look at are good teacher observations on how students are participating in class, everything from creativity to abstract thinking to some of those other deductive reasons, all of those things that show up in class that kind of say. We also have some means and we've got some teachers in our district that are utilizing some culture free assessments that we've got in NAEP 3, which is an anglic化 screening measure that takes out some of the traditional biases that might show up in some of our other, so it's a more culture free, so taking out some of the verbal things that may interfere with getting through major work students. So, there are a lot of different things that I think we need to be looking at as well as working with our teachers on maybe looking at some of those other markers that may not be as traditional or as traditional and even apparent for our students. We've got a great symposium coming up in January, the opportunity for our teachers. We have a couple of our gifted teachers that are going to be presenting to our elementary educators on how to enrich a classroom, what it looks like, how giftedness might manifest itself, so that we can start finding more students.
You mentioned something I had written down to ask you about is, how have the evaluation process, and you mentioned the changing of language, right, over the last 20 years, right, the identification process? And then, since you've already mentioned that, what is our hope or goal in representing? I mean, it's not a huge drop to match, to drop down to the state level, right? I mean, it's not a massive number. Do we have goals or aspirations for the underrepresented numbers, right? I mean, are we going to do anything different or extra to have more kids of color tested, right? I mean, we've got so many more, or kids of, not as, not English learners, right, or English learner. How do we have the capacity? What are we going to do to draw that capacity out, that if we approve that, that we're going to test a broader scope to really elevate the entire community?
Excuse me, I know everybody enjoys Andy's deep radio voice, but they're not hearing you, so we need you to jump on this mic.
I'm so sorry. So, that's a really great question. This is going to be the old school psychomy, talking a little bit here, but a 1 percentile difference in taking a look at going from the 98 to the 97th percentile. If you think about our total population, 1%, that's 300 students. That's a significant number in and of itself. That doesn't mean tomorrow we're going to have 300 new candidates. We have to do the work in order to find those. Changing those eligibility criteria, while it doesn't hugely impact overall, what some of, it does help to maybe eliminate some of the potential bias that might come in when it, when we're looking at kids that are at that far end of the, of the normal curve, that far end 96, 97, 98 percentile. Moving from between those just single percentiles is a huge statistical move as you, as you look down at that end. And so, just even by changing by 1 percentile allows us to potentially qualify more kids, but that's on the qualification, and that's on kids that have already been identified to be evaluated. What we need to also take a look at in looking at that is, is our practices, and this, it'll be beyond tonight's discussion, and we've got some incredible gifted teachers that are part of some committees that are working on that, that are going to be working with in the department as well as working with our teachers as well on improving practices of bringing students to student improvement teams to talk about potential giftedness and being able to utilize the great data that we have in a more constructive manner to potentially look for those students that could benefit. So, the change in criteria would, I believe, help us identify more, but there's a lot of work to be done on simply getting kids to the table to discuss going to an evaluation.
The last question I had is, I've been in school districts all over the country. I wasn't gifted as an elementary kid, but mostly after I was in the, but I was kicked out of school, I was not making grades. It took a teacher in 4th grade to pull me aside and spend the time to figure me out and then, you know, threw me into the mix and said, hey, this kid's not making grades and he doesn't test well and he's a troublemaker. But that attraction to the gifted program fundamentally changed a lot of how I saw school, like was no longer bored, right? Is, the question I'm getting to is, in Kansas, is giftedness part of special ed, or is that a national program? Because I don't recognize, I didn't remember it as being part of special ed in some of the other states that I grew up in. So, can you talk a little bit about how Kansas umbrellas that versus, you know, is that good? Is that not good? Is that holding us back from reaching more kids? I'm just kind of, some of that's subjective, so I don't think maybe it's out of my opinion, but...
Sure, sure, yeah. Some of those things, I may not quite go there on, because it'd be my humble opinion, but giftedness is not recognized at the, at the national level. So, IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is our sped law. It is the law of the land as far as everything that we do in special education. The federal level doesn't recognize gifted as in exceptionality area. State of Kansas does. We're one of 10 odd states out there that, that do recognize Kansas, excuse me, that recognizes gifted as part of special education. I could get that list for you sometime if you want the other states, but what that does though is it, A, it assures that we have gifted programming available to all students in every district. It also sets forth guidelines for identification as well as assurances that services will be provided through an IEP. And so, all of those things are guarantees for students that their needs are being individualized and that they're getting what they need, and parents have an opportunity to participate in that as well. Other neighboring states don't have that within special education. They kind of set their own parameters on how they provide those services, either at the local level or at the, at the state level. I can't speak as much to that because I've lived Kansas my whole career, so I don't know as much of what that looks like, but I can't necessarily say pros or cons of that. That's a state of Kansas decision, and so, it does give us strong parameters and guarantees for our students, though, and that is one aspect that I do appreciate about being under sped. Yeah, yeah, please.
I would just, with it being under the umbrella of special education, we're bound to that annual review every year. Everything that is in an IEP is something that is, we're bound for students with disabilities looks identical to students with giftedness. So, when we think about measurable goals, we think about baselines, we think about how the services are delivered and what we're doing, we're trying to do that as well in environments that support those learning needs, and that is one thing unique about being in Kansas. So, other questions?
Just one quick one. Would, would, in order to, if we pass this, in order to hit the ground running, how long is previous testing good for? Would we be able to scoop some of those kids up that previously haven't qualified? Or would we start over with the testing process and identification process?
So, I think that's a great question, but even if I were to answer that not with a student that was gifted and a student with a disability, it's going to be an IEP team decision.
Okay.
And we're going to take some of that data and we're going to review it, and the parents will obviously be part of that team and move forward as, as we can.
Okay.
Others?
Thank you so much.
Do you mind if I make a couple of quick closing comments? You know, one of our strategic plan goals is high academic expectations for all, and you know, as you look at some of the numbers that Andy and Jeanette shared tonight, you know, there are some things there that are probably tough realities for our system, but I just want to say how proud I am of them for recognizing this need, for bringing it forward and saying, we need to get after this, and not only the overall number of students that are gifted within our system, but also what we see in terms of disproportionality with our students as well. So, it's a brave presentation in many ways, and I just wanted to say that, that, you know, as we really work towards our strategic plan and the goals related to our strategic plan, this is a great example of how our system's working to accomplish that.
I would second that, and I would also point out that we do have some gifted teachers in the room who are here to support as well. So, thank you, Andy, and our teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Jaeger mentioned from the top, we do have a motion here if somebody wants to make that, to make that change.
I make the motion to approve that the Olathe Public Schools utilize the Kansas State Department of Education's gifted eligibility indicators as guidelines to determine the eligibility of students for gifted services in the Olathe Public Schools as presented and recommended by the administration.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Connell, second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wigliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.04, address code update.
All right, thank you for having us here tonight, giving us a little time this evening to talk about the process that our high school address code committee went through. After I give a little background and timeline, you're going to have the opportunity to hear from a couple of building administrators, as well as a couple of students that we brought along. And I can assure you already that that will be the highlight of the presentation, not me. That, you know, I so appreciate them taking the time out of their busy schedules to come here. We met with the students yesterday to kind of pregame it so they weren't nervous at all, and they're going to be awesome. I'm excited to hear from them. Just a brief history. First of all, committee representation, you can see on the screen, we had two students from each of the five high schools. We had one teacher from each high school, all five high school principals, district representatives, such as myself, Chris Pittman, our district council, just to make sure everything was good legal wise. And then, we also utilized our high school parents on site councils later on in the process to get feedback. I'll talk more about that. Again, a brief history timeline, we brought everybody together back in February of 2022. That seems like a long time ago, because it is. Started some initial discussions, what people liked, what they didn't from our current practices. Then we also really looked at dress code examples from other districts as well. We came back together a few weeks later in March of 2022, started drafting some, started drafting some language. And then, you know, we had some really great discussions amongst students and teachers and administrators. It was, that was probably the coolest part of the whole process, was just people got to see things from different perspectives, right? The administrator from the student perspective, student from the administrator and teacher perspective. And it was really exciting to see that exchange of ideas, and there was a lot of aha moments, you know? People on all sides of that thought, okay, yeah, I can see how that makes sense. And so, that was probably the coolest part of the process. We met again in May of 2022, because we don't have anything else going on in May with the high schools, so we try to throw one thing more in. But we, again, continued that discussion, and then we finalized language and created kind of that final draft. Then in late August, because for some reason I couldn't get them to get together over the summer, I don't know why, but we came back together in late August, early September. High school principals took it to their site councils and met with their parents on their site councils to get some feedback from them. That feedback was then taken back to the teachers and students that had served on the committee to kind of share that feedback with them, so they got that parent perspective also. And then finally, through all that feedback, we came with some slight final revisions were made to the draft based on all that feedback from the site councils, the parents, going back to the teachers and students. And really, a bulk of this has already been common practice. It's really providing consistency across the buildings, across the five buildings, because we've never had a consistent dress code across five buildings. An example of that is some buildings allowed hats. That's a great example of just that consistency across buildings. And obviously, we know kids talk about that, right? If I go to this high school, I don't get to wear a hat, but you do because you go to that high school. And so, that was a very important part of having that consistent dress code across all five high schools. And the plan is to roll this out second semester with students. So, again, as I said earlier, the best part of tonight is you getting to hear from the students and our building administrators. And again, I'm so thankful for them, not only the time last spring, but getting together to plan this presentation. And so, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Carlton and Kylie, let them introduce themselves and talk a little bit about themselves.
Hi, I'm Kylie Connell, Brian Connell's daughter, and I'm a senior at Olathe North. Just a little background about me, I've played varsity volleyball there all four years, and I'm in the Sports Med and Exercise Science Academy. I'm also a part of NHS Eagle Flight Crew and Eagle Service Club. So what we have up here on the right, actually, the whole slide is teacher feedback based off of our, like, dress code revision process. And so, on the top right is what they came together and decided was the best part of the whole process. So I'm going to combine the first two and say, the representation from all buildings was key, and hearing various perspectives from both adults and students was very, very important. And basically, so not only are all the high schools themselves very unique, but all of the individuals inside of them are too, with different backgrounds and different cultures, and having people from every high school be a part of these conversations opened up all of our minds to explore new thoughts and ideas about the dress code that we may not have thought of before. And the third point is like the relationships built between administrators, teachers, and students, and most importantly, like the students' voices were heard. That was one of my biggest worries going into this, was that it, like, we're going to talk about all of these things and nothing was going to be implemented. I can proudly say, reading the dress code, that all of our, like, no worries, like, everything was there. And I think that that was very beneficial to have the students attending all the meetings as well as the teachers and principals, because it gave a better opportunity for all of our voices and, like, worries and issues to be heard. And I think that with this revised dress code, our ideas and opinions were very well implemented and listened to. With that being said, I'll go ahead and give it over to Carlton.
Hi, my name is Carlton Johnson. I'm a senior at Olathe West. I'm involved in tennis. I didn't make varsity, but I play tennis. And I also do Olathe West Flight Crew, and I'm also part of the Avid Program, and of course, the Dress Code Committee. So I'm going to talk about the bottom right over here. How will it positively impact the five high schools? We already mentioned earlier, consistency amongst all the buildings so that there's no rule changes or confusions. It's updated policy because, to be honest, the old dress code was a little bit outdated. This is a brand new policy to kind of adapt to what we're dealing with here in 2022. It is inclusive to all students, and it will help them express themselves in positive ways, whether that be their races or ethnicities or their genders, which is pretty cool. And then, this shows that we care for students and their well-being, and we are willing to listen and really to listen and make a change if need be. Like Kylie said, I did really feel like my voice was truly heard during this whole process, and I really appreciate that, because I feel like as, you know, sometimes as kids, we're not quite adults yet, our opinions are often maybe not as acknowledged or tossed aside, but in this case, I really felt that I was heard and understood in all the changes that I wanted to make, and I'm really proud of what we've come up with here. Thank you.
All right, so next, you guys are going to talk about what your kind of answers to these questions, right? What you thought was the most valuable part of the process? So I don't know, who's going first?
Okay, I'm back. So, to answer my question that I kind of talked about, the best part of the dress code revision process, like we said, we both already kind of touched on it, but it was the ability to, like, be heard. Like you said, like, students normally don't get to be heard, but being, like, picked to be part of the dress code committee, I really felt like I was given the opportunity to be heard. And like with my other, like, representative from Olathe North, Alex, that was something that we felt was very important in every single one of the meetings, was being able to give our opinions, but also, like, being listened to and being heard, not just, like, having a one-sided conversation. And so, for the second question, how will it positively impact the five high schools? I think it'll bring, like, a sense of, like, connection and, like, community between all of the five high schools that will all be on the same page, and that one won't be like, oh, well, we get this and you get this, like, it'll be like all the same.
Okay, so my probably favorite part of the revision process was just being able to feel like I made a difference in this community overall, because with me being a senior in high school, there is not much time left. I'm really glad I got to be a part of this whole process and do something that not many kids get to end up doing in their whole high school career. And that made me feel special, made me feel like a leader, it made me feel like I can really accomplish anything in life. For number two, I feel like it'll positively impact the high schools by just making it so everyone feels included and accounted for. So with that being said, every, no matter, like I said earlier, your race, you know, your gender, whatever you identify as, everybody will feel like there is a place for them in this new dress code, so that they won't be judged, or they won't be looked at differently, depending on what type of clothes they do decide to wear. And this also makes it better for people with different type of body styles or body types, that they're all included, and it's all around a very simple and ergonomic dress code.
All right, so next, I'm going to have Mr. Herman and Mrs. Lane come up and talk about their perspective from the building level.
I am going to talk just as a, like Mr. Heinecke, a former Olathe student. I think maybe the dress code was that antiquated. I went to Havencraft and then to Indian Trail in Olathe South, and I can think that there's several things in the dress code that were the same when I was there, and I graduated in 1991, so it's been a minute. And so, I also just want to applaud the system. This will be year 28 for me in the district, and this is probably the first time that I felt like we brought students to the table, and their voices weren't just heard, their voices changed our minds. It was one of the best examples, and I will use it till the day I die, of true collaboration. And so, both of our eight students have graduated, they were both seniors, and the car rides on the way, the car rides on the way back, were consistently talked about. I am so impressed that adults are listening to our voices. So that being said, I want to talk just a little bit about the consistency piece that's already been chatted about. One of the things we knew coming into this process is that we really wanted to make sure, like Mr. Alberts mentioned, that we were consistent, not just with the policy, but consistent with the philosophy behind the policy. And the idea, like our students mentioned, that all representation was had, that we looked at it from a lot of different viewpoints. We looked at it from a generational viewpoint, because what I might say, you know, and what a high school student might say, very different. You know, the other piece with the consistency is students' talk. And so, we wanted to make sure that when we were able to give the why behind, that some of the pieces of the code we landed on, we were all in agreement and understood the philosophy behind the code. And so, that was very important. We had a very great diverse group of students and staff, and one of the things we talked about quite a bit was making sure that the dress code was inclusive, so we weren't singling out or making anyone feel uncomfortable when they're coming to school for academics. And so, I think when we talked about the cultures and viewpoints specifically, we talked a lot about not objectifying certain genders, not objectifying certain races, religions, and/or beliefs. And that's hard to do. You have to be in a very vulnerable space to be able to have those conversations and really make sure that we're doing a good job looking at things from all viewpoints, not just our own lenses. And that's, I think, why the process took longer, because we had to trust each other in order to go there. And we talked for everything from religious headwear to students that might want to wear a flag from their country to school. And we hashed out everything from top to bottom, and our students, generationally, sure provided a perspective that I don't think I would have been able to bring to the table as a 50-year-old, middle-aged woman. So it was a process, but it was also indicative of the kinds of students we have in the Olathe School District. They really wanted to make sure all the voices were heard, and their peers' voices were heard as well. Jason, structure.
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about structure and implementation, excuse me, but I do want to echo that this was, and I got to meet Carlton, this kid is awesome. He came over to North and sat in my office the other day, and I was just blown away by him, and it's, there's not always those opportunities that we get to see kids in other buildings, and we got great Olathe kids all over the place, and that's why I picked Kylie for this opportunity. But the structure and implementations we go through the process is what we really like is that if you, if you go through our dress code, it says a lot of what you can do versus what you can't do, and that's what our old dress code said. You cannot wear, you cannot have, and it was very generality of headwear. Well, headwear can be listed, and it's so subjective. So we were able to get down and break down those structures in there. And then, as we moved through it, one of the, my favorite parts is even with my staff who's processed through this, they don't have to argue or fight with a kiddo anymore about taking a hat off, instead of they get to build a relationship of, hey, man, I didn't know you were a Cubs fan. And they have that conversation with their kids in the classroom, and they said the relationships have become a lot better and tighter in those spaces based off of little things like that, when it used to be all we were doing was fighting to take hats off. And ironically, what we noticed is hats and hoodies are allowed, and now we're seeing less hats and hoodies than we've ever seen. But lastly, with implementation, and this was one that I really liked about what we did in this part, and in part five of the dress code, it speaks to the staff and it speaks to the administration of how we're going to handle situations if we do cross a dress code issuer concern. You know, there is a little old school. Carrie talks about that, and it was just the way that we've done things for many, many years, and it's, hey, 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 pull your pants up, or hey, 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 do you have something you can put on in your locker and cover yourself up, you know, whatever? And we really put kids in a bad spot, and the only way they could respond in that moment in most cases, like our teenage kids respond, is defensive, right? And then it goes from being a dress code violation to dealing with a situation of respect, or whatever that may be, and we're putting our kids on the spot in the hallway. This speaks to how we're going to implement it with our students if a dress code situation occurs, about having a one-on-one conversation, having the opportunities of, and again, most of the times, we were trying to do these things and trying to work, but offer them an opportunity to, do you have something in school to make that change? Or can we call a parent, or whatever it may be, to make sure they can get through the day, and understand that we're just trying to fix the situation so we can get you back in class, because that's really why you're here for the day. So we're really happy about what we came out. Clint talked a little bit about implementation second semester. We're going to have some conversations at our schools, really process it through and make those changes so our kids know, but I guarantee you that all five of us have already kind of implemented these things, knowing what was coming, to really help our kids get there. So really thank you guys for the opportunity to do this, to be a part of getting to meet so many different kids, teachers in the district that just stepped up and did such a great job, and I really am happy with the product. And I think to finish this off, we're going to put the kids back up here if you guys have any questions for them.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I actually do. So we heard from all members of this team that either you felt heard, or the dialogue was great, and minds were actually changed, and things were actually implemented. Any of you, can you just give me like a quick example of a specific thing that you felt like they weren't going to do this, and now we're doing it? Or, hey, we really got them to change their minds on something? If you can't think of one off the top of your head, that's fine.
Yeah, I will. I'll talk about kind of the implementation with it. So my whole, like, reason, my strong reason why I'm here is like, I've always been, I'd like to say, very fashion-forward, and so I'd wear what I want to school, trying to follow the dress code. And like, sometimes, like, I'll raise my hand and my shirt will come up, and the teacher will automatically go, I can see your stomach, like, call me out in front of the class, everybody's watching me, and every, and you just feel embarrassed. And so, with this new implementation that we have with our new revised dress code, it's way more, like, calming, I think, and will help, like Mr. Herman said, build a relationship with an administrator or a teacher and the student, and like, taking them separately, one-on-one conversation, there's no embarrassment, and I think that'll really, really bring a change, and that's something that I'd really like to see.
Awesome, thank you.
So basically, I feel like probably the biggest aha moment of the whole process was we were in the meeting room, and we were having discussions about, you know, revealing pieces of clothing, which obviously isn't my position to speak, so I was waiting. And then, whenever we got to the discussion about other types of clothing, I was the one to bring up hats and hoods and discuss about that. And it was kind of like a big moment when the whole room, like, erupted with conversation. And then, I asked everybody, I was like, so what is, like, the big deal about it? And then, it started like a whole conversation, a chain reaction of side conversations in regards to the topic. And then, when we came back together, we all realized, okay, well, you know, it's 2022 now, where there's no big deal with it, and so, we were able to make a change just like that. And I was like, wow, like, I really just made an opinion, a suggestion, I asked a question, and everyone listened to me, and we discussed it, and we can't, like, I've never felt like that before, and that was just an amazing feeling for me, that I actually got to say something and be a part of that process, and be the one to not just watch the change happen, but to make the change happen.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Other questions?
Anyone else?
No, I did want to add a comment, but it's for you all to hear, is that I want to make sure I give kudos to Doe Beveridge and Dr. Jaeger, newly elected last November. They allowed me to go to the KESB, and there's a breakout session on, a bunch of sessions on equity. And this particular session, among the many I went to, was equity in dress code. The statistics that they gave was a presentation of 301 females were being called out. And so, I had that conversation with my daughter, and she goes, all the time, and she had actually the dress code policy on our wall, this big, in her bedroom. She was getting called out all the time, because while she's tall, wearing the same clothes with someone else who was shorter, one covers her wearing the same clothes, or larger human beings wearing the same clothes were getting called out. And so, I want to really give credit to the team and the students for articulating that, for the administrators for listening to that and saying, yes, the same fashion on three different people might look so different, but there's no shame in that if you're really focused on the one, the big thing. The other thing was getting kids in class and seeing their faces. That's one of the things you guys, you administrators mentioned, is that's the thing. They need to stay in class, they need to stay where they're learning rather than being called out or sent to the principal's office, right? And so, I have heard it on the inside, at home, throughout the process, and I would tell you that for you all administrators, very, very positive feedback throughout the process. It's not just a presentation. She felt heard, Dr. and Mr. Herman, for all those conversations and for all those kids, because as soon as they found out I was on the board and she was one of those representatives, she was getting lots of texts and Snapchats going, tell them about this, tell them about this, tell them about this. So I'm, kudos to you two and then all the other representatives for being that voice for those students, because that's really where we are. The other thing was that what we adults, when we all look at that dress code, I want The other thing was that what we adults, when we all look at that dress code, I want to kind of say this out loud, remember that this isn't 1972 when the last dress code seemed to have been written, right? It's okay for hoodies and hats. The key is, we want to see them. We need them to be able to hear us, right? Those finite things were like, wow, that's really good, that's really smart, right? And so, and then coverage, right? But, you know, a lot of people, you were, you were in the same meeting I was with last year at KSB. Adults of my age were freaking out on the presentation that was there about how literal it was and too much, and it's like, you know, and I realized at that time, it's like, our biases as adults has to be managed with the expectations and biases of culture, backgrounds, economic stature. All those things have to be a priority as the kids and education over everything else. And I was really pleased with what you all did. And so I wanted to make sure that Dr. Jaeger and Joe, because both of them came up to me and was like, you have an interest in this? You can be in charge of helping some of this stuff. And really, actually, what it was is they were recognizing that something they had already known, they had already been talking about, they had already been aware of, and engaging their leaderships, Carrie and everyone. So I just want to try, get that on the record, that things don't happen overnight. Many times, they've been happening for a while, and it's just when, right? So thank you guys.
I just want to kind of wrap up by again thanking these guys for spending the time, because it was a lot of time, and everybody else that was part of the committee, because it did take a lot of time. And somebody said that safe space that was created during those discussions, because it really was, and it worked both ways. I mean, there were aha moments for us as adults, and, okay, I get it, that makes sense. But it worked both ways. Again, with students, they'd say, why can't we do this? Or why can't we have this? Then there was like, when we explained why, they were like, then, okay, that makes total sense, we get it. And so those are aha moments both ways, and it really was a safe space to have those conversations and just a great experience. It was, it was amazing, and that's what we are here for, right? To work with our kids to make good decisions for everyone involved.
I want to think back, this is for the high schools.
Yes.
It does not apply and triple down to middle school and elementary at this time. That's the next evolution, is let's get this done at the high school level and see how it works and where we've learned and adjustments and change. I don't want to make sure that out loud, so Dr. Jaeger, you can address that, but I want to make sure that that was very clear, that it doesn't mean third and fourth graders are going to have these same plans.
That's correct. And, you know, in terms of dress code violations on our old policy and things, really, the 96% of our challenges and issues have come from the high school level. So, you know, as you said, we'll move forward with this, see how it goes. And if we need to make other adjustments at other levels, we're absolutely open to doing that. So, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments, Mr. Boyd.
The Board of Education reserves limited time during its regular meetings for individuals to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room when requested by the board president. When beginning your address to the board, we ask that you please share your name, the city where you live, and what schools your children attend or have attended in the district. Tonight, we request that individuals, speakers, limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor their time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. We ask that speakers refrain from discussing complaints involving individual staff members or students if they have not been previously addressed to the district administration. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, audience members will not be allowed to speak, yell, or give applause during public comments. This ensures the board is able to listen and then transition to the next speaker. Please note that those who disrupt a meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings.
All right. First speaker is Patty Lantner.
Hi, I'm Patty. I have three kids in the district. I apologize in advance for meandering, but I need to set the stage, and it's all related to education. Hopefully, you've seen by now all the ways that our country and our world have gotten away from all that is good and hope for the children. The elitists run the show and make decisions that are either extremely, fatten their own bottom line, or if they don't actually need more money through insider trading, their decisions and donations support their twisted goals of a new world order. Bill Gates is just one of these players. He's got his hands in planning for the pandemic, pushing vaccines, farmland, so that it can sit unplanted or be used for modified crops for meatless future for the non-elites. He acknowledges that his previous experiment of 400 million into Common Core years ago was a failure. He's also spent 2.6 billion on other areas of K through 12. Last year donated 1 million to Equitable Math, which states that white supremacy is in math by the focus on getting the correct answer. He cannot actually believe that math is subjective, or he's got some other reasons for that, which seems like a big problem. An intelligent civilization far from Earth would also know that 1 plus 1 equals 2. His renewed vigor must have an ulterior motive. He's now buying his future vision of elitist laborers through math curriculums with $1.1 billion influx. I have no doubt he is smart, but this is devious and not in the best interest of any regular person, who will not be in the elitist class, even if you may think so. Public corporate partnerships are the driver, and all the kids are the collateral damage, except with a handpicked few. NEA is pushing SEL as well as Bill Gates and workforce education. NEA says this must be a priority over academics. They also push student activism as a main goal above learning. NEA declaration on their website, "Project-based learning helps students become activist citizens of the world." I don't want my kids to be activists, they should just be kids. In Chicago, there's a study, a 10-year study of SEL, in that, in that time, things have only gotten worse. The graduation rate has increased to 83.8%. However, math proficiency went from 79% in 2010 to 17% in 2021. They lost 63,000 students. Rating proficiency went from 70% to 21% in 2021. Budget grew by 2.2 billion. SEL and equity budget for 2023 is $30 million. I don't know how rates can drop that significantly and it be a successful program according to their CFO. So I don't know that we'd be any different than Chicago in an experiment like this. So when they say it's evidence-based, it's fraudulent data. When they say it increases graduation rate, that just means students are graduating that should not be. When they tell you that it improves behavior, that's not true. It means they're no longer reporting or punishing inappropriate behavior. Lowering the bar is not the way to student success. Individuals are not celebrated and transformative SEL, it is all about the collective of mindless automatons. Let's let kids be kids and stop them from being damaged for life. Another study showed that only, from the federal funds, about $800 per student per year was getting to the low-income schools. That is just insignificant and not worth the damage it's coming to our children.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Megan Brooks.
Good evening, Board of Education. Due to all the things in my life, I did not have time to sit down and prepare a speech for you. But I thought it'd be, this is a great time to share real life. I tend, in my classroom, I tend to share like real-life moments with my kids, because I feel that it's important that me as an educator, I share with them like what it is to be like, what it is to be a teacher in front of the classroom and feel different feelings and emotions of what's going on in the world that we live in. And right now, it's really tough. We are in the midst of the trenches. Like today, we had a sub job go unfilled. So today, I taught second grade. I learned a lot about chip kits, which those who use chip kits, that's great things, I just need to learn a little bit more about them. But it was exciting because I got extra time with the kids. But as an educator, it's just so tough right now. Like, I tell my coworkers, right now, my biggest goal is just waking up and resetting my mindset, which we talk with our kids about with the leader and me. We have to be able to shift our weather. I can't come into school with a negative attitude. I can't walk in the door with all the bad things that may have happened that morning, or the fact that I forgot my lunch on the counter, or I left my coffee mug at school and then I had to bring another one the next morning. But it's still not an easy job, and we are still missing subs. We still have positions in our district that are currently unfilled, that we're having long-term subs fill those positions. And teachers are tired. We are tired, and we just need the extra support. And so it was perfect timing with Brooke and Anne Marie presenting about American Education Week. I have had so many people, both staff members, parents, educators in the district, community members, the past couple of months, recognize that I am having a tough time. And the fact that they simply sent me a text, or they sent me a message, or they wrote me a little card saying, hey, you are doing great things. You are making a change. No matter what's going on, you are touching a life. You're touching at least one life. And so tonight, I just want to say, it is so valuable, that little text, the little email, it makes a big difference for a parent to email me and say, my kid brought home this piece of paper that said their musical leadership role, and they were so excited to share it with me. Like, me printing that one piece of paper was just something that I did, but for that to become like a monumental moment for the family means the world. And so I urge everyone, thank someone, because it's really tough right now, and that little piece of thankfulness can go a really long way for us. I love the Olahtha Public Schools, I never want to go anywhere else. It's tough, but we are all here together, and I want to make sure that each other and lift each other up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Eaton. My name is Jeff Eaton. Excuse me. I live in Lenexa, and I reside within District 3 of the school district. Before I actually start my prepared comments, I want to say quickly, I experienced a bit of serendipity tonight, hearing from the gifted program here. I'm actually had prepared my comments, which I'm going to get to here, to talk about, if you will, the other 97, 98% of the students out there. And it's revolving around the latest release of the National Assessment of Educational Progress Report. That's what I'm going to talk about tonight. So my purpose is to provide a quick recap of that report, more commonly known as the nation's report card. It has been reported by the press that in the most sweeping analysis of test scores since the start of the pandemic, the 2022 report revealed a nationwide plunge in reading that wiped out three decades of gains. Overall, scores in math and reading for both fourth and eighth graders have fallen sharply since 2019. Nationally, the average for math scores for eighth graders in 2022 dropped to 274 out of a possible 500, falling eight points from 2019, and reading declined three points to 260. These results are from all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and the U.S. Department of Defense Education Activities. The state of Kansas declined in both math and reading. The news is not any better for our high school seniors. The national average ACT score for the class of 2022 fell to 19.9 out of 36, down from 20.3 in 2021. It's easy to say or convenient to blame the pandemic, and I believe we can to an extent. However, let's look at some trends. This is the fifth consecutive year that the ACT scores have declined, fifth year. And this is the first time that the average ACT score has dropped below 20 since 1991. More than 40% of the seniors nationally did not meet the ACT benchmark for college readiness. I have not seen Olahtha district scores, and I don't even know if they've been published or if they're out. Maybe that's something we can talk about at another point, but I haven't seen those yet. Now, what to do with this information? I'm quite certain everyone has heard the old adage, those who do not study or understand history are doomed to repeat it. With the national assessment now published in our own recent history at Olahtha School District, we should have the adequate information to reanalyze and update our planning and consider for future contingency. We can make assumptions based upon recent history. We can make contingent plans for various scenarios. So I ask tonight, what are the exact results of the NAP for the Olahtha School District? What are the adjustments to the district's strategic plan to address student performance? What can you reveal to us? I'll close in saying that there is no perfect plan, but there is no excuse for a poor state of readiness.
Sorry, Miss Eaton, your time is up.
Let us renew our commitment for success for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next speaker is Jennifer Gilmore, but I don't believe that she is here, so we will continue on. Jamie Klenda.
Hello. As a parent who is surprised to find herself speaking here again, I'd like to start with saying we are in this together. I'm sure we share the same concerns about the latest NAP report card, loss of learning in math and reading, and the importance of safety, and in particular, physical safety. We want supported and valued teachers and staff. Most importantly, we want the best for these kids. Unfortunately, it does not appear to me that the heads of the teachers, unions, ASCA, NACE, or CASL, or any of the other offshoots of CASL necessarily have the same noble goal. Did you know that the Fitzer Institute birthed CASL in 1994? John Fitzer, despite being a Christian in his youth, became something of a spiritualist, panoramic, new-age person. He used Ouija boards and spoke to psychics. The institute has a link-up today to our shared sacred story, so we can tell our larger missing one, the story of who we are as one global human family. This is where CASL comes from, where SEL comes from. This is context worth knowing. Now, measuring sel.casl.org tells, and I quote, "making explicit issues such as power, privilege, prejudice, discrimination, social justice impairment, and self-determination." In a similar vein, NACE, the National Association of Colleges and Employers, advocates engagement in anti-racist practices that actively challenge the systems, structures, and qualities of racism, as one mere component to be career-ready. What does this mean exactly? I also do not fully trust Big Data, UNESCO, NGOs, with their limitless funding in programs that reach our kids and somehow take our tax dollars back, nor transformative SEL with its origin at the faith-based Fitzer Institute, or other fads like culturally responsive teaching, or comprehensive sex ed, or generative questions. It seems like these entities have another agenda in mind, one that does not place academic learning and family values at the top. Do we really want nothing more for our kids but to be obedient followers of the billionaires and other various NGOs? Let's be honest, shaping the hearts and minds of children, teaching how to relate to others and the world primarily belongs at home. I think teachers have enough on their plates. I have these two sources I was going to mention, I'm going to skip over. There's this book called Race to the Bottom: Uncovering the Secret Forces Destroying American Public Education by Luke Rosiak. It's really informative.
Thank you. Amanda Miller.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Miller. I have three kids in the Olahtha School District, two in elementary, one in middle. I am here to address the transparency from the schools and district. There was an incident at FT a couple of weeks ago involving fentanyl. The only communication we got from the school was three hours after school ended for the day, and it simply said that there was a medical emergency. It was only after I spoke to other parents that I knew that I found out it involved a fentanyl overdose. My son goes to FT, and it could have been him. And I sure would have liked to know from the school what was going on. My son could have come in contact with the drug, and we would not have no, we would have no idea. This is something that should be shared with parents. Names and personal information about the students involved do not need to be shared, but communication that there was an incident involving a deadly drug at the school should definitely be addressed. It could even be in a separate email from the medical emergency. When something like this happens, parents need to know, and they need to know The only communication we got from the school was three hours after school ended for the day, and it simply said that there was a medical emergency. It was only after I spoke to other parents that I knew that I found out it involved a fentanyl overdose. My son goes to FT, and it could have been him. And I sure would have liked to know from the school what was going on. My son could have come in contact with the drug, and we would have no idea. This is something that should be shared with parents. Names and personal information about the students involved do not need to be shared, but communication that there was an incident involving a deadly drug at the school should definitely be addressed. It could even be in a separate email from the medical emergency. When something like this happens, parents need to know. And they need to know that they need to have a refresher conversation with their children about what is going on and how to stay proactive. I have been told that it's a privacy issue. So how is it not a privacy issue that you can tell parents that COVID or influenza is in a classroom? How is it not a privacy issue when a weapon or gun is found in the school? This is not a medical emergency. This is a public safety issue, and it, just like gun issues. If this is a policy of the school, it needs to be reviewed, because this is a very important public safety issue. This can be a life or death situation. Communicate and partner with the parents about these important situations when they occur. So if refresher conversations need to be had, they can. It is not up to the schools to have these conversations. It needs to come from the parents first. But how are we supposed to know when the school and district are not upfront with us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Cross?
How you doing? My name's Christopher. I'm here, I have two children in the Alatha School District, one in high school, one in elementary. We recently had a issue at my son's elementary school regarding imagination and the types of imagination that is acceptable. The only reason why it was about imagination is because the teachers that were directing my child did not want to direct him to what I think is the correct thing, of him being inappropriate in the setting that he was in. Instead, he was directed that what he was doing was being hurtful. The only problem is that even by what they told me, he never directed this at anybody, and it was just something that he was doing by himself. So I'm trying to figure out why they believe that it's hurtful, number one, and number two, why they think that they can put their arms around somebody's imagination. Imagination is very important, especially when we're talking about very young children. It helps them develop in their social skills, their cognitive ability. And to limit their imagination because a kid has a electrified sword that nobody can see and that he's not directing at anybody, I don't know how that's hurtful. And I don't remember the last time, or anybody for that matter, who's ever been attacked by like, I guess Highlander. It's weird that in this day and age, our children can imagine that they are of a different gender of which they were born, but a child cannot go on a Rugrats adventure. That doesn't even make sense, just because of what they may have in their hands that isn't actually there. So I'm here just to get out there that you should not be trying to discipline a child on his imagination, but actually get to the fact that my child probably shouldn't have been doing that at the specific time that he was doing it. Instead, we just focus on what he's imagining instead of what he's actually doing that's wrong. And I think that the teachers that are doing that to students, and because I'm assuming that it's happening to more than just mine, are causing great hurt and detriment to our children who are already struggling in things like academics. So I would just really appreciate it if you guys got together with whoever you need to, to let those people know that imagination is okay, and it doesn't matter what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comments.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. If there's no questions, I'd seek a motion to approve.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Item Number Six dot zero one through six dot one five. That's presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I understand we need an executive session. How long do you think?
Let's start at fifteen minutes, please.
Seek a motion?
Move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing salary, benefits, and related items, a bargaining unit pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at?
Seven forty.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, executed by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Moving along to actions, bids, contracts and agreements. I think we definitely want to take eight dot zero one separately. So I'd seek a motion to approve the 2022 2023 negotiated agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously.
Before we move to eight dot zero two, I do just want to take a second and just acknowledge all of our teachers. I don't know if we say enough how much we appreciate the hard work that our teachers commit to our students every single day, how much they pour into them. As we just approved the new agreement, and we realize that it's not perfect. We realize there are some things that we have to continue talking through and work through. But we as a board are committed to do that. We're committed to grow and to listen and to always come to the table as partners in this. So as we continue to have these discussions, we're just grateful for your partnership, grateful for the work that you do every single day, pouring into our students and to all of our classified staff, our education support professionals. We appreciate you as well, and we look forward to human resources making the announcements that they're going to send out here in the next coming days to what that increase will look like for you all as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Brad. If we don't have questions on, I guess I just asked, do we have questions or comments on any of these others? If not, we could probably take them together.
I just want to pull out eight dot one zero. Mr. Palanci is going to talk a little bit to that.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk to you about our playground upgrade initiatives. I know there's been some questions about the process and the current schedule that we're in. So I wanted to let everybody know that what we did first was this past summer after the bond issue was passed, we went through and did safety and maintenance audits, and we've started that process. And we finished about half of our schools that we're at now. And we started at the schools that had center-based resource programs, autism programs, or if the schools had student in wheelchairs or other mobility issues, we went and audited those playgrounds first. And those are the schools that we're starting at with our playground initiative. And so the first five that was approved last month have those programs or students at their place. Because we want to make sure that we are doing these upgrades as a process of having equipment and surfacing that meet ADA requirements. So right now, we're waiting for that to come in, and then we're going to start hopefully year before winter at our first school. Weather dependent, of course, we can install the playground equipment in any weather, but it's the surfacing that's a little temperature sensitive. So what you have for tonight on eight dot one zero is the phase two, which is the next five schools. And then we're currently in the process of working on probably about another 10 schools right now and finalizing those proposals that we'll bring to you in December as well. And we're just going to continue this process until we hit every school. And once we start installation, it should take us about two years to get through the district. So we're hopeful to start and just keep going.
And I think there was a question to Travis on the renderings that maybe there was an incorrect rendering, but that's been...
Yes, that's been corrected. There was a rendering that didn't show a student in wheelchair using the ramp going up to the new adaptive piece that we're providing. So our playground vendor has fixed that, and for future renderings, that will be included so we can show those to each community as we go.
Thank you.
I'd like you to elaborate a little bit. I know you gave an explanation, but talk a little bit more about that. So that the budget, and I sent that email to you, is way over what was projected. Talk about how those safety and maintenance audits and the ADA compliance modified the original projections for cost. Could you do that? Because that would help, because when I saw that number, I was like, that's a huge number over what was projected. But then I asked Dr. Jaeger, and you were able to, you and John were able to give me some context to that, but that's in an email. Would you expand about why, how did those budgets increase? And what are those things that you did from the safety and maintenance and the ADA review of compliance and evaluation at the individual schools?
Sure. Great, great question. So as we go through, and we do these safety and maintenance audits yearly. So when we went to these schools and started auditing them, we had some playground pieces and equipment that we have identified that either need to be replaced now or within the term of the five-year program for this bond issue. And we realized when we're at these schools that we'd like to make sure that we at least can replace that equipment while we're there, while we have the vendors and the installers there. So the scope of work at some of these schools did increase based off providing new pieces and of course also expanding the perimeter of our new port-in-place rubber surfacing as well. So that gave us an opportunity to provide more than what was originally in the bond.
Thanks. Others?
While you're there, can we talk about the amazing savings on eight point zero nine? The scoreboards?
We can. So the original budget for replacing our scoreboards at our district athletic complexes was to replace our baseball, softball and soccer. And at the time when we estimated it, we had the scoreboards, but then we also thought that we were going to have to go through and replace all the posts and beams and structures that support those. So after we were able to go through and do another audit of those, we were able to realize that we could keep some of them. A couple of them have been damaged due to a wind event that happened to ODAC prior to my arrival a while ago. But once we take those scoreboards off, we'll be able to re-straighten those and then of course replace all the scoreboards there. So we were able to utilize some savings based off that happen.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to piggyback on it, Lieta brings up the balance point that Dr. Jaeger and I had at the conversation is they're all estimates during the bond election on all individualized projects. But in that particular case that Lieta brings up is savings here, you know, overages here. It's a bucket of which there's a finite balancing conversation that you're always having, given inflation, given other things. It's that it's, every project is unique, but they're also under an umbrella. We're going to get there to get everybody what they need, right?
Yeah, that's true.
I want to make sure I call that because there is two competing conversations, one's over and one's under. But it is to make sure that we call out that what Lieta is recognizing is that everything's interrelated.
Yeah, and we're trying to stay within those estimates, but as those were set prior to the bond issue referendum, we're always reevaluating them constantly.
And if I can add also, on the playground equipment, you're also looking at capital outlay that's not just bond because you broaden the scope, as you mentioned. You have two funding sources there. It's not just the bond, it's also capital.
Correct, and I can bring John up to kind of talk a little bit about that.
Oh, we don't have to get in the weeds. I just wanted to say, I just want to say, you know, we can chase down that road a long time. It's also capital outlay that we're talking about in this conversation, not just the bond.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think too, you know, it's in many ways a bad example, but it's like building a house. You know, when you build a house, you want to do it the right way when it's built. And so, you know, I really appreciate the intentionality of Travis and his team, you know, working with our vendors around safety and security on our playgrounds and making sure that when we leave the site, the job is done there, not that we, you know, like leave something unfinished. And even though it may be a little bit more than our estimate, we don't have to go back in two years or three years or even the next bond and say, we really should have done this the first time, now we're going back. So the intentionality around that kind of work is really important, I think, in terms of being stewards of what we're doing with the bond dollars in our district.
And what Travis spent is seeing ahead, not just what's functional today, but in the five-year bond program, are these going to be sunset in three years? Are, you know, there's risk that maybe in two or three years. But if you can, as you just mentioned, you can address it today, if you can make them secure, make them safe, and not have to come back and say in three or four years, right? You're trying to foresee what the next five to 10 years look like for the children, not just with a budget that's allocated. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion if we're...
Move to approve eight point zero two to eight point one three as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Action out there, nine dot zero one, the permanent utility easement modification at the Lindenwood Business Center. Move to approve the permanent utility easement modification at the Lindenwood Business Center. Second. Motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to future action items, as always, I would encourage everyone to take a look at those and get any questions to Dr. Jaeger that you have. I particularly call out ten dot ten, our legislative priorities for the 2023 session. You know, I know that there's always going to be sort of a reshuffling. I think that they're probably generally, I know that they're generally the same, but just sort of what we prioritize as we go into the session. So I'd encourage everyone to make sure that they pay special attention to that one. Information written. As you can see, as always, we've got our Head Start Directors Report and then the bond issue update. Moving on, topics for discussion. The board members have topics that they would like to discuss.
You go ahead. Go ahead.
You sure? Okay, I was just going to add a few things. First test scores came up earlier in the meeting, and I wanted to just let everyone know, Kansas, this is a tweet that went out. Kansas scores remain stable amid worst national decrease in a decade. Kansas is one of only six states to either maintain or increase its composite ACT score. Kansas is also one of only eight states to either maintain or increase that they met all four college-ready benchmarks. So it's a huge thank you to our teachers, everyone involved in education in our community that we really stood out as a state. The national test scores that were referred to aren't district, maybe Dr. Jaeger might want to say a few words about that, but they're not, they're not district.
That's correct.
Scores, so that's not something that we can look at as a district. But certainly we have test scores internally that we're always looking at, and we can always get better. But I did want to get that out there. The second thing I was just going to mention is the Olathe Public School Foundation had their breakfast, and they announced that they have 50% match for a website called donorchoose.org. And so teachers put projects up there, things they need for their classroom. And Olathe Public School Foundation is going to match 50% of that, I believe up to $15,000. Is that right? So if you're interested in that, check it out. It's just donorchoose.org. And you can find a school or the school district just by searching in there. So those were the couple things.
Thanks. Mrs. Felter?
Thank you. And wasn't the foundation breakfast amazing? They raised 215,000. Cindy Von Felt and her team, amazing, and you always do such a great job, Dr. Jaeger, so thank you. Do you guys know what tomorrow is? It is Love Your Lawyer Day. Did you know that, Chris? That's a real thing. Google it. So you guys give Chris some love because we love you. We're grateful for your service to our district. Did you guys even know that was real? I have two attorneys in my family, my kiddos, and my dad, actually, so three. So give them some love, guys, and they deserve it. Veterans Day is coming up, guys, and on a serious note, thank you to all who have served. I mentioned it at the city council meeting and actually cried, so I'm not going to talk much about it, but I'm very grateful. And then I wanted to give a shout out to our fire department. Did you guys know October is Fire Prevention Month? The fire department hosted nearly every Olathe kindergarten class in person at our fire stations across the city to reinforce the message of trustworthy community helpers and fire safety. And then Fire Chief Jeff DeGraffin Reed, he spent the whole month of October reading to firefighter, reading firefighter books to children in every one of these kindergarten classrooms. So, I mean, that was a major commitment. It was in-person and virtual. So thank you to our fire department and to Jeff DeGraffin Reed. Shout out to Officer Eric Clark. He was honored yet again as the 2022 Kansas City Crime Stoppers Officer of the Year. Let's see. And then I want to give a shout out to Olathe Subaru. How great is it? They donated a Subaru. I've never even heard of Impreza, a cool-looking car, to our AutoTech and Auto Collision Program at the Olathe Advanced Tech Center. Thank you, Olathe Subaru, for doing that. I mean, you're, talk about opportunity, hands-on. I mean, you're, talk about opportunity, hands-on, real world opportunity for our kids. Um, and I wanted to say, where's our buzzer on public comments so that we can evenly timeout people? Let's get that back in here, so we don't have to be involved, take the human element out of it. And then finally, Head Start, you know, I'm a huge fan, Kim Sill is amazing. We have 180 students over three sites that we serve every month and we've got kids always on the waiting list. Um, Dr. Yeager, it might be worth inviting them to come and do a presentation to bring our new board members up to speed. I mean, for those of you that aren't aware, we were one of the very first programs, literally the first year in 1965, on the War on Poverty, when it was an eight-week program. It was here in Olathe, one of the very few programs that summer, and we have had that grant ever since. And it's early intervention for our youngest kids while their brain architecture is still forming. It's an economic decision that has a huge return on investment, so I'm a huge fan, as you can tell. I would love to have Kim Sill and Dr. Hawkins and to just tell us even more information about that. Thank you for the time, guys.
I just want to make one comment. I want to shout out and highlight the process that Clint and the team took for the, the dress code, the new development, that policy. I think when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, I mean, it's, it's hard to get an understanding of what that is, right? And I think that process, we heard from those two students tonight, like they, they, they felt included, right? When they talked, they felt like someone was listening to them. They, not only were they listened to, but they, their words and what they lent into that conversation was appreciative, was appreciated. And we, we took the, the steps to, um, the one step further to, to make their, their word, put their words and their suggestions into our actual policy. So from my perspective, um, that's what it looks like from my, for, for, for me as a board member to see, um, equity and inclusion carried out in our policy, equity and inclusion carried out in how we educate and nurture our kids. So Clint, congratulations and a huge shout out to you in, in developing and facilitating the whole process.
Can I, can I kind of add to that real quick? I was just going to say, and I'm not sure if this is where it started, but we had, we had a rather ugly situation last year that I'm not going to get into, but, um, it kind of bore some pretty amazing things. And one of them was we had, uh, some students in about a year ago, Dr. Yeager did, and it, it started, I believe it started there. So we kind of turned something ugly into listening to students and making positive change for the district. So, uh, I appreciate you, Dr. Yeager, for, for starting that.
And both, and both of our students tonight were part of that very initial conversation, so it was great to see them both here tonight. Yep.
I just have a couple of things. First, I want to say, I feel like tonight is about how Olathe never stops at the status quo. We're always looking for where we can improve and we celebrate along the way, but we're so quick to say, how do we be better in all the things that matter, which leads to kids and educating kids? So I, I'm just so inspired tonight by, by, by everyone who spoke. Um, two things, Tuesday's an election, so a little civic side of the conversation is, is please exercise your right to vote. Um, and if you need help educating yourself on candidates, our JOCO election website is great. There's also another one that the local chambers together, um, do, and it's jocovote.org, I believe, um, and great resources. So please vote if you have it already. And, um, second, some of us are going to the KASB conference next week in Wichita. It's a great time where across the state, school board members come together and superintendents come together and we just really learn from one another and, um, it, it's great. KASB is a really great support network for us on the board. Two things that will happen, we'll be voting on our, uh, leadership for that organization as well as their legislative priorities. We vote on that next week. So, um, anyway, it, it's, it'll be a, a good time. We will come back so much more knowledgeable to all of you, so thank you, that's all.
Others? I'm going to tag on that love that Julie called out, please get out and vote. I mean, a year ago, 25% turnout in this county was amazing after years and years, blow it to 30, 35, 40. I mean, really, everybody needs to show up because every vote matters. Uh, to tie onto what Joe was mentioning about the foundation, uh, that's an amazing donor's choice, donor's choose. Uh, if y'all are not familiar with it, donorchoose.com or something. I, I've supported that for years. There is also a call out that Amazon Teachers, if y'all aren't familiar with, there is both a Facebook page and teachers have the ability to go out and identify things they wish they could or have, from markers to paper to bouncy balls or other things. If you are Amazon people, that's a great way to go pick some teachers, especially with American Education Week coming up. A lot of very inexpensive things that you can do to show somebody your love. The way it works, do it, it sends it to them at the school or where they register themselves. That's a fantastic resource. The benefit of the foundation is they're matching funds, so that's extra good. So all you teachers, a dollar from not familiar with donor choose, think big, because that day, I think there were 75, 80,000 dollars worth of projects funded right there from the beginning of mentioning it to everybody to the final, and that was pretty amazing. Uh, again, as, as Brad mentioned, the appreciation we have for the teachers and staff across this different, this, this, the district is amazing. I really want to encourage all of us to remember somebody was that teacher for you once upon a time. And if only one teacher, you need to find that one teacher, one of your kids' teachers or all of them, please. With that said, the negotiations process this year was different, right? There was a, a group and it was done in public and, and I went to a bunch of those, I didn't get to all of them, I always apologize when I couldn't. But to see the turnout, for instance, the other night, to see teachers really stepping into their role of let me be my own voice, let me be present, community members being there with them, staff members all throughout, uh, to support teachers, but also the district because their, the goal is to find something that works for everyone and nothing's perfect. So I want to kind of throw that out already. Nothing's perfect, but it is better and it will continue to get better. And I'm excited for the ongoing conversations that'll happen this spring and getting ahead of that. I know that's one of the things everybody wants to do is can we be ahead of some of this so you do start your school year with those budgets, right? Another thing I want, I, last month I mentioned, please get out to parent teacher conferences. I, I, my daughter's at North, so I went. Wow, the sheer volume of people that showed up was impressive. The teachers were thrilled, they were exhausted because I don't think after the last couple of years they had talked as much, but watching them just with lines at all these tables, I know the elementary schools' parents almost always show up and I heard at the middle schools. So I wanted to say thank you to the community for really stepping back into your role. Um, that, I'm going to encourage you on the volunteer side. Head Start, I'm on that, um, program committee, uh, there is an opportunity for you all to volunteer in the school district. I told Dr. Yeager that we had 500 and some odd this last year. My goal, and I won't stop at mentioning it, is volunteers is to get to well over 1,000. Registered volunteers, so I got my first chance to mentor today at Santa Fe. An awesome kid, happens to be, uh, has, his mom is a school teacher in Olathe, so that was pretty cool too. He was like, Mom, I was a school teacher. And he was pretty excited about that. And so that was really neat. So please step in. Head Start is also one of those that, how the school owner can tell you is that they're asking for volunteers, they would love, and even if you're not a regular volunteer, they want readers at Head Start, just like in the elementary schools. So please continue to show up for those folks. Football games, soccer games, playoffs, if y'all are not following the sports, it's amazing how much is going on. Amazing cross-country and soccer and football. You may not have a kid at one of those schools now, and if you have younger kids, you may one day. Go show up. Go be present, go be part of that community today, right? Because those kids hear it, they see it, they know it, and that's really important to those kids, is that their extracurricular activities take a lot of time and energy, but also make sure that those coaches hear from you as well positively. You know, there's a lot of things that happen in the sports on the field, they don't need to hear the cursing, the yelling, the bad stuff, they need to know that every one of them is supportive. So, um, the last thing is that I'm really excited, you've heard me say a lot, that Olathe high, high schools are really one high school with five campuses. The dress code consultant being stable, that's important. Kids are all across each other's schools. The last high school to get a Father's Club is Olathe North, they just had their launch a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago. Really, really excited. Camille Zimmerman's husband stepped in and said, I will be that, and then 22 other dads showed up and said, we want to be part of it. But they're all interconnected. And if you're not familiar, the Father's Club is the chance to get adult man. You do not have to be a dad of someone at that school to be involved, to be present. And, uh, their first event will be the day after Thanksgiving break. Um, but I'm going to maybe steal some of my thunder, but I'm going to hand it over to Robbie. There is a program in some, they're going to roll out the middle school, so y'all familiar, some of the feeder schools to Olathe East and Olathe South will be the first middle schools to roll out Father's Club as well this spring. Really, really exciting. Blue Valley has all the middle, will open up middle schools, Lee Summit, so this is something that's happening. Robbie and I had a conversation, what's the elementary school your kids are at?
Indian Creek.
Indian Creek, super cool. There's a father's figures model, it's kind of like, it's not Father's Club, but it's in the elementary school where dads and adult men are there in the elementary, they had that event last night. What a great idea, so many new ideas to bring people into the schools. Please keep showing up, please go into the schools, all of us will support that, so thank you.
Others? I actually have comments this evening.
What?
I know, right? Thanks, he was on, so, um, I just wanted to say how awesome it was to have, to have students here tonight, and I know we're going to continue to do that, but that just, that, that fills my cup.
That's awesome.
That's it.
That was too long.
So my turn now?
Turn it over to you, Dr. Yeager.
Okay, so two, uh, quick updates during the meeting. We have 161 kids in the distinguished scholars program at Olathe North. Between 40 and 50% of those students have gifted IEPs, so that's the power of our staff right here, tuning into board meetings and responding, so. Um, the other thing that I, that I would say is, uh, Mrs. Felter, thank you for sharing love your lawyer. Um, the SLT team has a text group and Chris Whitman has been getting lots of love. We're very excited for Chris tonight and sharing that stuff.
Is your cup full, Chris?
Dr. McMullin did some research quickly, found out that it was real and then it all happened after that.
I wouldn't steer you wrong.
That's the, that's the live action that's happened during the meeting tonight, so. Um, I want to thank Brooke and Ann Marie for being here tonight and doing a presentation about American Education Week. Obviously important as we think about our, our staff and, and our district, regardless of what the role is, that it really takes all of us moving forward to do the very best thing we can for our students each and every day, so, uh, great thing for us to be thinking about that. Um, in addition to that, during American Education Week, we'll be, uh, seeing some promotional materials, if you will, in our schools and on social media. Uh, with points of pride, one of the things that our communications team has been working on is some of those things that are really unique to our district that, uh, we should be awfully proud of, that maybe we don't do a great job of sharing. So you'll see that over the next couple of months, but an emphasis certainly, um, during American Education Week, so just wanted to call that out as well. You know, one of the things that I talked about last month and we continue to hear a little bit about is, um, certainly the fentanyl challenges that, that our community is having and, you know, across the nation, um, and, and drug use and abuse by, by young people in general. And I just wanted to call out a thank you to Kevin Kufelt, who works with Johnson County Mental Health, who on Monday this week spent about an hour with all of our administrators across the district, um, not only talking about, you know, certainly the, the challenges around fentanyl, but also identification of what that looks like. Um, as, as you all know, um, some, some different drug substances that are beginning to look like candy for kids and, and those kinds of things. And I so appreciate him just coming as a community partner and visiting with our administrators across the system, uh, so we can really be on top of what our community and our kids are experiencing, um, sometimes intentionally and sometimes unintentionally. And so, um, Kevin did a great job and sure appreciated his partnership with that. And then lastly, um, just, uh, a wish, if you will, for our community to have a great week off on Thanksgiving break. That's not something that we've always been able to do, but our calendar worked that way this year, so our district will be closed that week. And the reoccurring theme tonight has been a little bit how great it is to see kids, but also how tired our staff is. So, uh, my hope is that everybody will have an opportunity that week to, to recharge and spend time with those that they love and things that they love doing. So that concludes my comments. Let's go with 30 minutes.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma. And the board return to the regular meeting at 8:45 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge, second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wicklitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I was going to wait. Actually. Because.[1518.83]